Good evening, Board members and residents. I'd like to call to order our regular meeting for Monday, September 12th, 2022, and I'd ask that all those present please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Witt, will you please take the roll call?
Yes, Mr. Badkin.
Here.
Mr. Brado?
Here.
Mr. Olgiati?
Here.
Mrs. Rose?
Here.
Mr. Tomonella?
Here.
Mr. Witt? Yes, Mr. Burkess.
Here, thank you. Next is approval of our consent agenda, including approval of the regular board meeting minutes from August 22nd, 2022, approval of the bills in the amount of $1,020,320.54, approval to renew the visual computer solutions annual subscription, and a firewall renewal from SYO. I'd be looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make the motion.
There's our support. Support. All right, we've got a motion by Mrs. Rose and support by Mr. Brado. Any discussion? Hearing none and seeing no public comment, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Board. Next is the approval of our regular agenda. Board members, I did bring in some information, and I'd like to add easement acquisition as item F3. Otherwise, I'd be looking to approve the regular agenda as presented with the one addition.
Make a motion to approve the regular agenda as presented, adding item F3, discuss easement acquisition.
Okay, there's our support. Support. Okay. Motion by Mr. Witt with support by Mr. Brado. Any discussion? Hearing none and seeing no public comment, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next is announcements. I do have a few announcements. Our Harrison Township Water and Sewer Department is looking for utility workers to join the Harrison Township team. This person would be a part of the crew that's responsible for maintenance and operation of the Harrison Township water and sewer infrastructure. The position is part of a collective bargaining agreement, offers competitive wages, health care, dental, optical, and disability insurance, paid vacation and sick time, and a pension. For more information about the position and how to apply, you can visit the Harrison Township website and navigate to the employment tab. The Harrison Township Library is hosting DNR Officer Brad Silleri Tuesday, September 20th at 7:00 p.m. Officer Silleri will inform the attendees about hunting season dates, tagging requirements, safety zones, legal hunting hours, baiting, and much more. Saturday, October 1st at 11:00 a.m., the library is hosting Steve Mrazek, who is the museum director and historian from Southridge Air National Guard Base. Mr. Mrazek will present on the World War II military campaigns in Sicily in Italy. For more information on these and other great community events, you can visit the library's website, htlibrary.org, call them (586) 329-1261, or email them at librarian@htlibrary.org. The Harrison Township EDC is hosting their annual golf outing next Monday, September 19th. You can find signup information on the Harrison Township website. The Harrison Township Senior Center is hosting a senior health expo Tuesday, September 20th, from 10:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. at the Tucker Senior Center. The expo will feature a variety of vendors specifically for the senior community. Seniors and their families are welcome to attend this event. A barbecue lunch will be available after 11:00 a.m. The Harrison Township Senior Center hosts a monthly casino trip on the last Friday of every month. Space is limited, so please call for details and to register. The Senior Center also features cheer yoga Tuesdays and Fridays at 1:00 p.m., as well as an aerobic strength class on Mondays at 1:00 p.m. and Fridays at 9:30 a.m. The Senior Center also hosts bingo every Wednesday at noon and euchre every Thursday at noon. The Senior Center also takes various other field trips throughout the year. For more information on times and events, you can call the coordinator, Jen, (586) 466-1497. Our Harrison Township Parks and Rec Committee is moving their trunk or treat to Lake St. Clair Metro Park this year. Excuse me, Hallo Palooza will be on Saturday, October 15th. Truck retreat and other fun activities will be held from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. Food trucks will be on site. Showing of the movie Hocus Pocus will start at dusk. For more information on these, as well as all other township events, you can call the supervisor's office at (586) 466-1445. Visit our website, www.harrison-t township.org, or follow us on Twitter at Harrison T W P M I. Are there any other announcements?
I just want to piggyback on the Hallo Palooza event. We are looking for people and organizations to host as a trunk, so that you pass out candy to the kids. We are expecting, this is open to all of Macomb Counties, we're expecting a big turnout this year. So, I was just checking the website, I'm sorry, I don't know if it's on there yet or not, but if it isn't today, it will be tomorrow. There should be a link where you can sign up, so we would appreciate getting some people early signups, and there's prizes for best dressed trunk.
Any other announcements? All right. Hearing none, we'll move forward with our agenda to resolution, item D1. Is that, you got that covered, Mr. Badkin?
Yes, yes, I do. So, as the board and residents know, we have a Harrison Township hometown hero. We take nominations from anybody regarding anybody that has done things inside the township for any reason whatsoever, and we try to pick the folks that sort of shine and go above and beyond, you know, to provide things for residents or firefighters in this instance, and I'll get to that in a second. But we started it last year, and I'm pleased to announce that our third recipient of the award is Mary McGaffey, right?
McGawie, yep.
Okay. And she's here tonight with her husband Larry, who nominated her for this award, her mom Jackie, and her son Shaden. So, if I could just have you folks come up here while I read the resolution, if that's fine? And Sue and Melissa, if you don't mind, just right here, maybe facing the camera, and I'll read the resolution. Mom, if mom wants to come up, she's more than welcome, but she didn't have to, so. Okay. Yeah, yeah, since, so Mary was nominated by her husband for multiple, multiple things that she's done throughout the years, and not just this year, but she spends time cleaning up the spillway, just out on her own. She spends time making cookies and delivering them to the fire station. Are those fat-free cookies?
No.
Okay, we should think about that. No, I'm teasing. She provides sidewalk chalk art for kids going up and down the sidewalk, and I think probably the thing that caught my eye the most was sewing angel gowns for the bereaved parents, right? Which, to me, that's, that's, that would do it just all on its own. And her husband Larry stated, she acts in selflessness, and she's touched many lives, and I think by reading just the nomination that you provided, we can all tell that. And a couple of committee members, I'm sorry I didn't introduce them, Sukin, Alyssa Goine, so they're part of the selection committee when we get this, when we get the nominations. So, I'm going to read the resolution, and then if either one of you have anything to say, that would be great. Okay? If we start to embarrass you, just let us know, and we'll, okay? So, Charter Township of Harrison Board of Trustees Resolution. At a regular board meeting of the Board of Trustees for the Charter Township of Harrison on Monday, September 12th, 2022, the following resolution was adopted. Whereas Mary McGaffey has given a distinguished service to Harrison Township, and whereas Mary McGaffey, right? Am I saying, McGawie? Oh, McGawie, I'm sorry. I'll say it wrong again. Has been selected by the Hometown Hero Committee as an honoree for the Harrison Township Hometown Hero Award. Whereas Mary McGawie cares for her community by picking up trash along the spillway and other areas. Whereas Mary McGawie takes milk and cookies to the, bakes cookies, takes milk and cookies to the Harrison Township Fire Station, where Mary McGawie brightens up her neighborhood by sidewalk art for the children of the neighborhood. Whereas Mary McGawie sews angel gowns for bereaved parents. Now therefore be resolved that on behalf of the residents of Harrison Township, this Board of Trustees wish to pay tribute to Mary McGawie for being named the Hometown Hero Award for a service in the community, and to wish her continued success in the future. So this, this is just a copy of that, and it will be mailed to you, the original will be mailed to you by the end of the week.
Awesome, thank you.
Susan, do you have anything, Ms. Ken?
I do. I just think what you've done is fantastic. I wanted to say also that I think our board does an amazing job of being an example for hometown heroes, and Brian's search of folks like you has revealed somebody who really has developed the power of one in a community. I have a little something I'd like to read. The power of one is incredible in a person. It actually does a great ripple effect throughout the community. If someone sees somebody picking litter up, somebody else might do it the next day. So, we see our board out doing these things every day throughout the community, during their professional time, caring for people, but particularly during their personal time, and it's great to be able to identify others in the community who are doing the same. This poem is called "The Power of One." "One song can spark a moment; one flower can wake the dream; one tree can start a forest; one bird can herald spring; one smile begins a friendship; one hand clasp lifts a soul; one star can guide a ship at sea; one word can frame the goal; one vote can change a nation; one sunbeam lights a room; one candle wipes out darkness; one laugh will conquer gloom; one step must start each journey; one word must start each prayer; one hope will raise our spirits; one touch can show you care; one voice can speak with wisdom; one heart can know what's true; one life can make the difference. You see, it's up to you, and you did it." Congratulations.
A round of applause, thank you. Congratulations. Thank you for your nomination.
Thank you for your nomination.
She's still doing stuff over the days.
I know she is. So, thank you very much. Thanks for all you do and have.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
True. Don't you watch it?
Great. Well, yeah, thank you for the committee for the work, and certainly thank you for all the wonderful things you've done for folks in our community, and I do, I think it is, it's a ripple effect. I know I, one of the state of the township addresses, we talked about it, it really, you know, we have a beautiful community. We get, you know, Southridge, and we have parks, and, but really, it's our residents, it's the people who are in the community that make, make it truly a community, so thank you again.
So, Board, if I may, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution honoring, sorry, Mary McGaff.
McGawie.
Motion by Mr. Badkin, is there support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Olgiati. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Witt, will you please take the roll call?
Mr. Badkin?
Yes.
Mr. Olgiati?
Yes.
Mr. Brado?
Yes.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Tomonella?
Yes.
Mr. Witt? Yes, Mr. Burkess.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on on our agenda, the next item on the agenda, item E1 from the clerk's office. Mr. Witt?
Thank you. So as required under ordinance, our marijuana businesses recently applied for the renewal of annual permits. As the board discussed, we had some original appeals that we had to hear, but as we went through and reviewed our applications, we had one additional permit holder that we could not renew through our standard process. Unfortunately, we had to deny that permit. Our ordinance states that if any time before or after a permit is issued, the information, any information that changes regarding that business needs to be reported to the clerk's office. When we went through and reviewed that based on information from both our building department and our fire inspection team, we found that there had been changes to the core business and how they were operating, and we had not been told of those. They had subcontractors essentially in, operating under their license, and the township had no idea that there were subcontractors in there. It's the way, when our inspection team went out, that's who they found, was other businesses working within there. And then they went out for a later inspection, and the entire building was completely empty. There was nothing in there. So, as we went through those inspection processes, we did, you know, speaking with the building department and the fire marshal, they both had issues during inspection. There was an issue with the state fire, fire services when they originally went and did their inspection. I believe that's been cleared up since. But administratively, we unfortunately had to deny the permit. We contacted the permit holder. As their right is under the ordinance, they have the ability to appeal to this board for, basically, approve that appeal to grant that license for another year. I believe the applicant's here tonight, so unless there's any questions for me regarding this, invite the applicant up if he's got anything to add to the appeal that he included within the packet.
Okay. Any discussion, if there are any concerns with that, Board members? So, all right, we'll turn it over to the applicant.
Thank you very much, Board, for having me. My name is John Meredith. I represent CHM-1. Thank you, Mr. Witt, for saying everything. And what I put in, I will demonstrate to you today that there is a misunderstanding on everything that was said, and we were never operating that we feel, per the state too, which you have. We are in good standings with the state, and I have other emails, I can show you that they're well aware of what happened, why, when the inspectors came out for the new ordinance of certificate of occupancy, that there was not material in the building. That's the only thing. I also have our original floor plan, with the floor plan that was given when we did our application this year for the new certificate of occupancy. So I can show that everything is in good standings. I think there was a huge misunderstanding when the inspectors came out, and the gentleman that was there, Mr. McGregor, and Mrs. Corey that was there, I had them there. I do not do well with the inspectors, so I will leave it at that. I just, it's something that makes me very nervous, so I think there was a lot of misconfusion there and misinterpretation. CHM-1 has never operated with someone else in there as far as doing business outside of CHM-1. Everything is metric tagged in our facility and metric tagged in the manifest for metric. So anything that comes into the building has to be owned by CHM-1, and it's tagged. Anything that leaves the building has to be owned and tagged by CHM-1. Those are both yellow and blue metric tags. So there was no one operating and doing other business but CHM-1, and the state was well aware of that. Unfortunately, when the inspectors came in for the second time, our business relationships with companies that we produce as far as their recipes under our name, this is nothing different than a franchisee at McDonald's producing french fries and then having the ability not to use their own recipes. That's what we were doing, and then we were selling that product in the licensed metric system under CHM-1. This is commonly done. The state also had our, if you want to say, business relationship, knowledge of that, that that was happening. So there was no other business being done besides CHM-1's business. Why did CHM-1 remove and ship all of that product back to either licensed dispensaries or licensed processors? It's because we didn't want to do business anymore with people that we were producing those recipes for, under our name. It was not a significant business deal for us, and it was leading to things that we didn't want to be involved with, and that's why we shipped everything out. Now as far as being there, we've never changed tenants, we've never changed utilities, and the facility does have product in it, and it does have 31% of it occupied right now as far as product in there, but we do not process any raw materials from the fire marshal. And I want to address, we did have a CO2 model machine that I made previous before I came here. My background is in pharmaceuticals and medical devices. I spent 10 years in the operating room telling surgeons how to put faces back there for cranial maxillofacial surgery and chest wall reconstruction. When I came to this industry, the people that do extractions and the engineers didn't understand fractionation of extraction. That means that plant-derived materials, like poppy trees, for example, we do the same thing to make opiates. And inside of that plant, there are what is the smelt, what is the fats, liquids, and waxes, and the oil, which is the pertinent that we're looking for, which is like what we draw out of a syringe. No one understood what the solvents they were using, and there's four major solvents, and we wanted to use a safe solvent, which was CO2, or you use nitrogen in medicine, which is even safer, but they didn't have that. None of the machines had fractionation. I built a model that didn't work that shows fractionation, that's all that was. So there was a lot of miscommunication. That machine, I threw it away in the last three weeks. It was sentimental to me because I built it, but if there's going to be problems, I'm just going to throw something away that doesn't work. There's huge miscommunication here, and we just want to answer those and show that there has been nothing that has changed as far as what the miscommunication says, and that's either on our fault or something that we did, but we want to straighten it out and have that time to do it.
Okay. Any questions for the business owner of the board?
I have a question. So you're using recipes with another supplier?
No. So what we did is that we were making Nike shoes in our facility and selling them under CHM-1, but to do that, I can't put 2,500 threads in the shoe if it only says 2,200. That's the recipes we're using. So for example, if you were making right now in this industry, gummies are very popular. If it calls for one cup sugar, one cup water, one cup cinnamon extract for flavoring, then your molecule of THC or CBD, and then the sugar they put on afterwards, those are what we were following for our products that we were making. They were recipes already done, and because that company, which is a licensed company, couldn't keep up with their back orders, so in essence, what we were doing is we were making ibuprofen for Johnson &amp; Johnson, all the same stuff, and then it comes out with our tag on it that we made it. That's the only thing we were doing.
So I guess my question is, so you're changing to a different supplier or recipe?
Not, absolutely not. No, no. So let me try to explain it better. I made gummies. I put it in, CHM-1 made gummies. CHM-1 didn't own the brand, which was banneded. That's what we were making gummies for. We put them in that package, we made the gummies, we did everything. Everything came into our facility under us, raw materials, packaging, everything. The only thing that we didn't have, we don't own the patent to Nike or the banned product. So for us to produce that, we have to follow what that product line was doing in our facility. It's our product until it leaps. We own it, we have it, anything in there is ours. Sugars, syrups, flour that came from the state, anything, that's all CHM-1's. When it goes out, it has a sticker on it that says CHM-1 when it goes to a dispensary. We produced it, we packaged it, it's our metric tags, our source numbers, our packaging tags. The checks come to CHM-1. We get paid. Once we get paid, to do all that because I didn't, and our company didn't develop that recipe, we pay a royalty after the transaction's done. That's what was happening.
Okay.
Why is your facility vacant, though?
It's not vacant. There's metric product in there, and there is, as far as tables and that, we don't extract, all we do is package. So we're bringing product in, but it has to come in the metric system. I haven't brought anything in because we're in this right now, but there are, from what we have there, metric tag products there, there are tables, there are equipment there, it's just, that's what it's used for now, packaging and storage.
I don't understand the analogy you're making with Nike and ibuprofen. Can you explain that to me?
I'm sorry. Let me just go back and say what I did to this gentleman. Erase that, I apologize. What we did is we brought in, we paid for all the raw materials, we paid for all the products that came in. Everything was ours. Everything is ours. The checks come in, we put them in CHM-1's bank account. At the end of the month, for any product that needs royalty, we paid a royalty on at the end of the month.
Thank you. So where do you stand right now with the building inspector and the fire marshal?
So with the building inspector, all we need to do is put, we have a little lip on the front door, they want it wheelchair accessible, and we need, in the bathroom, rails for a handicap accessible, and then the floor plan, which is the same, have the fire marshal come back out. That's where we stand with them. We do have three tags when they came out that are left.
Who's Tim McGregor?
Tim McGregor was the gentleman that was there that day. He is a business associate of mine, not a business partner. Tim McGregor is nowhere on any of CHM-1's business ownership.
So who is he?
He's just a business friend of mine. He owns businesses, and he's done contracting in the past. I've known Tim for five years as a personal friend.
So he was speaking on your behalf, and he said that the businesses were no longer there?
And that was a mistake. That is a mistake. The products that we had for CHM-1 that we were making were all gone, and we have proof of that in the metric system with the state.
And you guys are all up to date now on your water bill and your taxes and whatnot?
Yep.
Doing some days.
Our taxes are due, I didn't get to date, I was taking care of, they're due on the 14th, so, yep, we're all set, and that was submitted too with our water bill that's up to date. And also submitted too, I want you to know, those are all of our non-deficiencies from the state fire marshal and the code enforcers. So I don't know where this came from that we have deficiencies. And also included there was our medical renewal that was in July 22nd, so if we had deficiencies with the state, they wouldn't have given us that, and we're also in good standing with our rec through December 22nd, I believe, or 23rd of this year. I'd like to add too that your fire marshal Larry did contact Melissa, the state fire marshal, that day they were out there, and she called me and then said, she was calling him back that said she had no issues with what was going on in the facility, she knew it. So I was quite surprised when I saw all that from the fire marshal locally, because he did speak with Melissa, and she said that it was fine.
Is there documentation of that?
I can have Melissa call you directly. It was a phone call. I do not right now, sir, I can get that documentation for you.
I guess my question for Mr. Witt is, I understand the gentleman's trying to explain to us what's going on. Where, where's your understanding, because you seem like you're the head of most of this?
So, yeah, like, so I don't actually go out and do the inspection, so I get information back, and so the conversation that we had from their representative is what they basically had subcontract. What the guy explained to our staff on site was that they had different business partners that were coming in and growing, or processing underneath their permit, and it wasn't CHM-1 doing the business, it was a different company just in their space. And that's what the individual that was employed by CHM-1, or at least presented himself as employed as a business, you know, speaking on behalf of the business, saying that's what their business model was, and that they left, and that the building was at this point vacant, and they hoped to reoccupy it with another business in the future, with another partner.
Can I answer or make one thing to that? I apologize for Mr. McGregor. He wasn't there to answer business questions, and I didn't know that the inspectors were there to answer business questions. I thought they were there to just do the inspection. So I apologize about that, that's my fault.
And they, and they were either to do the inspection, but when they walked in to do the inspection, the building was vacant. Where is everything? Why does it not match what floor plans are submitted, what?
The floor plans did match, I put, they were exactly the floor plans that were submitted for the CFO. The floor plans did match, I put, they were exactly the floor plans that were submitted for the CFO. And just because there's product not in there, I don't understand from the state level, and that's where my confusion is, I'm sorry. I see where your concern is. That, I'm sorry, we just, we move product all the time and the state stuff through there, and I didn't. That was something that was an oversight of mine, and I apologize.
Yeah, and I, again, I don't think this is irredeemable. That's, you know, I don't bring these because I think, you know, like, when I'm looking at these administratively, I'm a machine. You know, input equals output, it's not really a discretion thing. And when we looked at it, he didn't meet those requirements. That being said, the company has been here since we started and has had successful renewals in the past. You know, I don't think anything is insurmountable, but it's up to this board.
So let me, because you're definitely, you prepared this, you reviewed this.
Yeah.
So can you give us your, I guess, your opinion of what you think might, you know, what your guidance might be on this, or what your feeling is on this?
I think the best thing, and I feel what the, possibly what part of the error was, you know, we changed our application forms to allow for businesses that are maybe established to sign off and say like, hey, nothing's changed, we're doing the same business we did last year, nothing's changed. I feel when this applicant did that, there's probably some things that needed to be updated for us to be able to review that we didn't get. So if we can get a complete application to understand the business model, what they're actually doing in the building, and if there are any business relationships that haven't been disclosed previously that might shed light on it, we can reevaluate. And if it's sufficient, I'd be happy to, you know, either, if the board gives me the authority to say if they submitted and it meets everything, and we can get the building and fire inspections done, we can move forward. I think that's a good path forward. I don't want to, you know, this wasn't, you know, there's a scale of things that people can do wrong. I don't think this is the I stab somebody thing. It's also beyond jaywalking, I think it's somewhere closer towards the jaywalking side, but.
Well, if I remember correctly, when we saw the other appeals, we tabled it, I think we gave the applicant 30 days to come back and resolve all the issues.
Sixty days.
Sixty days, whatever, I thought it was 30. But with these small items, I'm thinking 30 is probably more reasonable.
And that's sort of what I'm thinking, is if we just said like, hey, have, you know, reapply and make sure we get all the information cleared up. If the board wants to see it back, that we can do that. Or if you say, hey, Adam, we trust you and the marshal and the building inspector to say everything's copacetic. If you don't, you know, I'll obviously provide the board an update where that lands. Because if I deny it, I'd probably be coming back to this board for the finalization of that. If I approve it, I can probably feel like I can handle that administrative.
So why don't? I don't, let me just say, I'm sorry. I don't, I don't think for me personally, it's a function of whether I would trust you or not.
No, 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 I agree with that.
To me, it would be more whether or not I'd want to put you in a spot where you might be uncomfortable. And so if it were to come back to the board, you would be.
I feel like if I'm granting, I don't feel the pressure. But if I'm rejecting, and I feel like coming back is that, that different threshold. And maybe Mr. Huth handles this for a lot of different communities, and maybe he's got a.
I agree absolutely, if the board authorizes you to approve, if it's an order, you could. But definitely, if it's going to be a denial, I think it should be a board decision.
So can I, can I make a motion that authorizes the clerk to gather the intel by our first meeting in October, which is the 10th? And just update us with that you were satisfied with the documentation for both the fire marshal and the building inspector? And if it's not, if these items are not resolved fully by the October 10th, then we can talk about it as a board at that point. That would be my motion.
Just, I don't know how that falls as far as giving the applicant time. So if we just say, hey, we give them 30 days and then bring it back at a meeting after that?
I think he was good with that.
I'm good with 30 days, that would be ample time.
Okay, so we'll do 30 days and then bring it back to.
Yes.
And either approve it or bring it back to the board.
Yes, sir.
All right, so Mr. Badkins, you made a motion, did you capture that motion? Do you want to take a minute to make sure?
Yeah, make sure I get it there.
I read it back.
So the fire department will be able to go out and inspect again, and the building department within all 30 days?
The building department had a scheduled inspection today. But if the board had said like, yeah, the other issues are so big, we don't care, you know what I mean? Like it didn't, you know, it was a time constraint, you know, from an inspection scheduling.
So how backed up they were?
Yeah, they, it's, we're getting into the slower side of the season, but I don't see 30 days being an issue.
Right.
So to allow 30 days for the applicant to resolve the outstanding issues, and for the clerk to review and to review if in order, and to be brought back to the board if there remain unresolved issues. Does that work?
Yeah, you got the date, 10/10?
Well, I'm.
If it's applicable.
I'm just thinking, give them 30 days, and if it's wherever that falls, I just, that was my point, is like I didn't do the math, because usually it could be 28 days, and I just wanted to say it's 30 days and go over it. I'll support your motion, Mr. Badkins.
So just to go back to our fire marshal and our building department, our, my eyes and ears, because I can't be everywhere at once. So when, personally, when I see deficiencies and whatever else is in there, we need another plan, I base my position off of what our professionals are saying. So I think you agree that you can resolve all these items in 30 days, so I.
Absolutely.
I made that motion. But just so you know, if 30 days from now they come back, they're, I just want to be upfront.
Okay, thank you very much for doing that. And I understand 100%, and we'll get these resolved. Just like I did with, when the state came in, we have no deficiencies in that too, we will get them all taken care of. And I want to add one thing too, is that reasoning for that product being sent out definitely made our business better. And I will leave with that with the board, I don't need to get into it, it made it better. Okay? Not to deal with that, that product anymore and those types of brands, it just made it better for the community and us.
So just a question, Mr. Mayor, so what kind of products are you going to use the facility for then? What kind of products are you going to use the facility for then? I mean, if you're not going to use extraction and things along that way, are you making gummies, are you growing, what are you doing?
That's a great question. So right now, the market's changed so much that we will not extract because of the cost of the physical oil and metric. It's gone down by about 3,000% over two years ago. So it behooves us to get a seven-day manufacturing to order that in, and it's already certified through the state when it comes to our facility. If we do anything as far as measured flour product, that's by weight, or by pre-rolled cigarette, we would have flour that would come in that's already certified and tested, and then it would be packaged there. So our business plan under the processing now, which there are many options, will be just to bring product in, pack the product, put it in its respective packaging, put the metric tag on it, the metric seal on it, and ship it out. There will be no manufacturing of flour, meaning we don't grow, we don't have a cultivation license. And there will be no manufacturing of plant material into raw oil. It just doesn't behoove us anymore from a business standpoint. Not only for money, but we lose seven days by doing that. And then also, from the standpoint of where it came in medicine, we have a non-sterile environment if we're bringing that in. I don't want to do that anymore, I don't have to. Because, thank goodness, we've got enough competition out there that it's reasonable to let the right people stay in their lanes now. And there is a huge void in this industry for processing. The state, and I saw that from medicine. I come from an industry where I was one of the only manufacturers, wholesalers, and distributors. They let that happen in medicine. And I think that's unfair, but our legislation did that with processing in this arena also. So now we become, because of the large amount of licensed retailers in the state, and also now the agricultural department allowing us to do metric CBD, which is even better for the consumers, our facilities now become Amazon warehouses. We can't keep up with it, no one thought about that. The manufacturing's fine, we make little teeny gummies. But when you have 100,000 pallets of gummies that need to go out, where do you store them? Where do you put them? How do you package them? You see, that's what I said three years ago, coming from when they used to tell me to go out Colorado and make 100,000 pediatric aortic valves in five days. Where do we put it? It's easy to manufacture them, where do we put it? That's where we are now, we have a backlog. And we don't know where to put this product in this industry because processing facilities now have to become distributor warehouses in essence, and wholesale warehouses where they just have all that material waiting to be transported out of. That's why our business plan will be that going forward.
Okay, any other questions, discussion? All right, I know that we had a fair amount of discussion, but I'm not sure if there's any public comment, any other public comment? Seeing none, and here are no other discussions. We got a motion by Mr. Badkins with support by Mr. Whitler.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, board, thank you very much.
Next on our agenda, item E2, also from the clerk's office. Page 85, 65.
So the Michigan Bureau of Elections had approved a grant program to help us fund security improvements for elections. The state is using their remaining HABA money, it's Help America Votes Act from back in 2002, I think. But they've made $1,500 available per 2022 precinct to all communities, which for Harrison Township amounts to $15,000. In reviewing our needs, the clerk's office would like to invest in the installation of security cameras, which can be used to monitor our drop boxes, as well as spaces where we store election equipment, as well as new door controls that could give us a controlled access over those same spaces where we have secured, you know, our election equipment and ballots and that kind of stuff. Not that they're unsecured now or anything like that, we just feel we can do better.
Improve it.
And improve it. So as these items are closely tied with our IT, you know, cameras run over our network, they're connected to our network. It didn't make sense really to look at many places other than SYO. They do this type of work a lot, so they're constantly reviewing the types of products that are out there and available, making evaluations based on functionality as well as cost. So they reviewed several options, we prepared the attached proposals. Basically requesting the board approve the purchase of video cameras and door control devices at a cost of $14,664, with the cost to be reimbursed from the state.
Support.
Motion? A motion by Mr. Brado? All right, is there support?
Well, I just supported, I thought he would.
Yes, I'm saying, I don't think he made a motion, did you?
I did, no, I was just a reminder.
Are you willing to make that motion?
Yeah, I'll make that one.
All right, good, is there support?
Support.
All right, got a motion by Mr. Brado, with support by Mr. Badkins. Any discussion on the motion?
I have a question on page 68, item B, under jurisdiction comply with state contract. It says there's supposed to be a formal competitive quote. If it exceeds 5,000, up to 50,000, so it sounds like we need to do the bidding process again.
So they, they said that if there's a reason why you chose something different.
Then you're okay.
You're okay.
Justifying it.
Because A seems to contradict that.
I know, that's why I was reading through this, I'm like, I highlighted it because I have a question for you guys, so, all right.
And again, this is one of those things, like, we, let's say we bring in a third party, and they say, well, we want to, we want to record this this way. And SYO says, hey, wait a minute, we're not secure putting that through our network. I mean, at some point, when you've established that IT relationship, you're kind of, you know, not unlike having an attorney or an engineer, where they, you know, are kind of familiar with your system, so.
No, I'm with you in choosing them, I just didn't want us to.
Yeah, in my conversations with the bureau, I feel comfortable with it.
Okay.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none and seeing no public comment, we have a motion by Mr. Brado with support by Mr. Badkins. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries, thank you, board.
Just to let the board know, there's a little bit of remainder within the grant. We will, we are able, we purchased some additional ballot bags earlier this year, and so we're allowed, we're able to apply for the reimbursement for those, so we purchased.
You'll use up the 15 grand?
Yeah, we won't leave money on the table.
Okay, all right, good. Okay, next on our agenda, item E3, also from the clerk's office, it looks like that starts on page 74.
So board, we've received information from Department of Roads about the 2022 subdivision reconstruction program. In order to apply, we obviously have to, we have to have application done by September 16th. We've obviously been very successful in the past doing at least four roads under the program at this point. We're currently looking at two, possibly three streets, based on interest and involvement from residents. Waiter's base proposal for this, to prepare those in a timely fashion, the cost of $3,500. This is the same cost that it's been for the last, the two previous applications as well. Ultimately, the costs associated with any applications are covered by the SADs if they are created and completed. But we're recommending that the board contract with Waiter to prepare these grant applications at a cost not to exceed $3,500. And I will say that, you know, we just had one resident drop off signatures last week, and so we're hustling to make sure we can include them. And that's why we're trying to identify people that are interested in this program to be able to move forward with that, so.
All right, any discussion, questions, or is there a motion? Is there a motion?
Make a motion to the Department of Waiter to prepare the grant application, looking at different roads, subdivision reconstruction program at a cost of $3,500.
Okay, is there support? Support? Got a motion by Mr. Whitler, support by Mr. Tomannell. Any discussion? Hearing none and seeing no public comment, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries, thank you, board. Next on our agenda, item F1 from the supervisor's office regarding hazard pay. Board members, we've had discussions with union representatives regarding the ARPA funds that we've received, and the possibility of using a small portion of those funds for hazard pay. A number of other municipalities gave additional compensation to their employees throughout the COVID pandemic. Our firefighters received a one-time $1,000 payment in 2020, which was funded by a grant from the state of Michigan. Since that time, they have continued to take extra measures to sanitize their equipment, and also continue to wear additional PPE transporting COVID-positive individuals. In the board packet is a list of full-time and part-time employees, along with their hire date and proposed one-time pay. The proposal would reflect firefighters receiving $1,000 for years 2021 and 2022. The general employees would receive $500 for years 2020, 2021, and 22. The part-time employees would receive $250 for 2020, 2021, and 2022. With this proposal, only active employees would qualify for this benefit. No employee would receive pay for a year in which they were not employed by the township. The pay would not have any pension contributions withheld, and it would not count toward any final average compensation calculations. To put this in perspective, we received ARPA funds totaling slightly more than $2.6 million. And to date, we've had discussions considering using these funds in the following way, round numbers. $250,000 for an ambulance is one thing that hasn't been acted on, none of this has been acted on, but it's been discussed. $750,000 to fund the estimated bike path repairs. And that may be offset by a $215,000 earmark capture from a prior path project. And an estimate of roughly $250,000 of additional match for improvements to the shoreline and fishing opportunities at Waterfront Park. If we were to approve all of those along with this, these expenditures would totally, total roughly half of all of the total funds that would be received. So, and this reflects all employees with the exception of the board members, full-time and trustees. Is there any discussion or is there a motion?
I was a little surprised to see administrative staff on this list. Because it kind of came out like this was for firefighters and all the extra stuff they had to do, and, you know, going out to the public's home. going out to the public's home and interacting with the public. So I was just a little shocked to see a list of twenty-five, thirty employees that presumably worked in the offices. And I know you guys constructed the plastic guards and everything during twenty twenty, so how are you justifying this?
Well, the reality is, is, I mean, compared to some of our municipal peers, we were, I think we were back in the office full-time after about six or seven weeks off. I don't think Macomb County returned for upwards of a year and a half. So we didn't, you know, the employees at various levels, whether it be folks that are at the counter, it's difficult. In other words, so let's just say this, certainly from your comments, you could say, well, considering that firefighters were transporting COVID positive patients, right, which they have to do. But you could recognize, yeah, well, that's hazardous. But the reality is, our water and sewer field personnel still had to go in and maintain meters or address issues inside of homes. Our treasurer staff and our election people still had to face-to-face work with people at the counter. You know, as you work down that list, you might say, well, maybe there's someone who was in accounts payable that had less of that direct contact, for example. But the reality is, is some of those people were just as essential, and even though maybe someone who was off for six or seven weeks during the initial surge, we still had to pay our bills. And so some of the folks that maybe were behind the scenes also worked substantially more during those seven weeks, when some folks were able to be at home and have a little more security. So it is a sliding scale. Inspections still require, building inspections, you know, plumbing inspections still require entering the home. So to your point, there is certainly someone on this list that probably had the least amount of exposure or worry, and there's someone on here that had the greatest amount. We just felt that it would be difficult to try to isolate that. The numbers reflect a lesser amount for administrative staff than for the firefighters. But there was a feeling when we had this discussion at our level that if we're going to do this for one, we should try to do something for everyone. And that goes right down to part-time staff, I mean, folks that were, you know, still had to empty the trash at the parks, and they still had to, you know, go about their routine, even though there were a lot of folks that, in other professions and in other municipalities, were working from home. Any other discussions, questions?
I guess, I guess my comment is I'm a huge supporter of all our employees, and I look at, you know, the risks that, you know, some of our our employees take, being with the public, you know, the COVID and all that stuff that went around. But we always compare, we seem to always compare to other municipalities in our facility, you know, in our local area. But I look at it and I wonder, how are those municipalities pension plans? You know, because we battle this every year, you know, we make a big financial contribution for some of our obligations that were, that we have to withhold. And I understand that these funds cannot be used, if I'm correct, for pension plan recovery. Is that a true statement?
I don't know that I agree with that. I'm not certain.
We cannot contribute that money directly to our pensions.
So I, you know, I look at.
It's a general fund. I thought it would eliminate that.
No, it's still the requirement. It still has those basic requirements. We just don't have to test the same.
So we typically move some funds out of general fund, possibly into the pension plans once a year. I just think the amount of this money could probably be used for something else, so when we go to make that pension payment, you know, we're it's not a, it's just, it's just a lot of money for, in my opinion, for all the employees that are listed on there. You know, I understand that you can look at the list and see the ones that are in arms way. A good portion of the day, you see the firefighters and the sheriffs who usually have masks on anytime they're dealing with anything, so I get all that, so. I just, just a lot of money. And I know that the money that we got through the American Relief Plan is a lot of money. But let me sort of echo a little bit of what Ms. Rose mentioned about the amount of people on the list, so.
Sure. Just to give you an idea, I believe Macomb County gave upwards of one to two dollars per hour of additional pay initially in COVID for folks who were recording. At five hundred dollars, I mean, that's about a quarter per hour, per year, right? So I mean, I recognize in totality, right, but, you know, some of our, some peer communities gave upwards of a dollar, two dollars per hour of hazard pay during certain times. You know, collectively, this is certainly substantially less, but we it's fair to say that the conversation began with the firefighters, because that, there were certainly more comparables with firefighters getting hazard pay. But we certainly did find, you know, I want to say Shelby even gave out some kind of a bonus initially during the initial phase of COVID. There are different municipalities handled it differently. But certainly, by no means would we be the only community that would be looking at ARPA funds or any kind of hazard pay across the board. But it certainly isn't universal. There are peer, some of our peer communities that have not made any hazard pay, you know, available to their employees. So this was what, this was what we thought was a reasonable sum, recognizing what some of the folks have done and stuck with over a period of time.
And again, I think the hardest thing, and this is a conversation that the three of us had as we were working through these issues, is we could probably go through and pick this employee, this employee, this employee. But, you know, I mean, our members are
Bargaining unit.
Bargaining unit members, and part of the deal there is you sort of treat everyone the same, right? And so it's, you can't, we couldn't pick winners and losers in the way that we thought, you know, like, to your point, might reflect what happened as close as possible. But given that nature, we thought that this was the best path forward.
I understand why it's on the agenda. I understand that, right? This is, it seems to be a lot of money. But that's just my opinion.
Yeah, well, certainly, this is, this is something, when we look at it, this is something retroactively covering a three-year period. I don't think this is something we're looking at doing moving forward.
Mr. Fugaz?
Yeah.
This, twenty twenty, the firefighters have paid a thousand dollars, correct?
That's correct.
For the firefighters, this is twenty-one and twenty-two, correct?
This would be reflective of saying for twenty-one and twenty-two.
Okay. Did the rest of the general employees receive anything in two thousand and twenty?
No.
Okay, so this is two thousand twenty through two thousand twenty-two for the rest of the employees, correct?
That's correct.
General employees.
Yep. And, and again, there was a recognition that some municipalities did do something back in twenty twenty for all employees and firefighters and so forth. And at that time, you know, we had the discussion that, you know, again, everybody worked to some extent. Some people, you know, in the fire department, the clerical staff member there was there every day. COVID didn't change her work situation. But maybe somewhere between her and someone that was maybe doing an accounting function, maybe it wasn't as risky, but they were still coming in, making sure we had to pay payroll, we had to cover bills, things like that. When we opened back up, you know, it's fair to say that there was a heightened level of anxiety amongst some employees. I mean, we could speak to the fact that just amongst your family and friends, you know, we probably all have somebody, a neighbor or a friend who, you know, was scared to death of COVID, and you had other folks who, you know, just were, you know, a little bit more casual. But amongst our staff, there were certainly employees that had concerns. Took, you know, measures you might recall, I think, I guess that was before some of the board members were here, but you might recall, as Mrs. Rose said, we did put up some protective screening, putting fans in place to try to circulate the air to keep negative air pressure in the employees' workspace. We put in ultraviolet disinfecting devices in the air handlers for our furnaces. But, but again, you know, there was a, you know, you go into the counter, someone's coffin, you're kind of thinking, man, who wants to go up and help this person, right? I mean, it doesn't mean they have it, but certainly there were, there were some discomfort there.
So the math just off the top of my head is correct, you're looking at approximately two hundred and fifty dollars a year for the part-time employees?
Yep.
And then five hundred dollars a year for the general employees?
Right.
And a thousand dollars for the year twenty-one and twenty-two for the firefighters. Is that correct?
Correct. And again, if you were to look at that five hundred dollars from an hourly perspective, it's about a quarter an hour across a two thousand hour year. Part-time employees are about half-time, so obviously that's pretty close. And firefighters' hours are a little bit different when you think about it, because they're twenty-four hour employees, so it doesn't equate to that forty-hour a week type equation. But it's, the thousand dollars was reflective of the same level that the state provided in a COVID grant in twenty twenty. So, you know, if you're trying to pick, okay, well, what number do you choose, right? We're trying to say, okay, roughly about a quarter an hour bonus over that period, or for the firefighters, the equivalent of what the state gave. So you're going to try to pick, okay, what do you do, you know, what's too much, what's not enough, what's reasonable, what's bad. We just see that it's an opportunity to, to, I guess, reward the efforts that a majority of the employees went through and some of the anxieties they experienced and so forth.
Well, there's definitely no doubt that it was a very, very, there was really no model in terms of trying to handle this situation from the beginning of COVID until the end. The fact that you were able to get people to go in, they should be rewarded in some way. We didn't know what was going to happen. We're all kind of in a different bubble. I can understand what Mrs. Rose and Mr. Badkin said, so just trying to balance a real fine line there, I think, and, you know. I'm not going to say reward people, but compensate them for the time that they did, what they did spend under trying circumstances, so.
Yeah, and when we returned, a majority, by the time we had returned, and even during, during the initial phase, when everybody was staying home and people were still coming in, you know, there were a lot of folks that were not at work during that time, and our employees were. And there were, there were certain things, I mean, we talked about the governor's orders exempted, you know, the, you know, the critical employees, essential employees. And, and by definition, every one of our employees was deemed essential because of things like water and sewer, or, you know, again, support, just to certainly, we say fire, say fire and EMS is essential, everybody gets that. But in order to have a fire department, you've got to pay the bills, you've got to pay the payroll. So that makes the payroll person essential. From an administrative perspective, I mean, at any level, there's a lot of behind-the-scenes functions. Inspection certainly tapered off for a time, but at a certain point, we were back in homes, and water and sewer folks were in homes and so forth. Any other discussion? Is there a motion? Again, as it stands, we're talking about a fund that we received that's two point six million. I would be uncomfortable, I certainly recognize, you know, that if we were to take this action, that leaves us roughly two point five million to spend on things, you know, township-wide, and we're talking about improvements, you know, for example, buying that second ambulance and using some of this money, that services the residents as a whole.
Yeah, and that's something we discussed.
Right. And we haven't taken that action yet, but I mean, it's been on the, it's been on the horizon.
When we were looking at the ambulance, we, we thought, yeah, you know, we need these regardless.
Right.
Let's roll the dice because we think ARPA funds.
Are going to probably be pet loose.
Yeah, so that was a strong determination for me in making the decision was that I think ARPA funds are probably going to pay for this.
Correct. And this is, like I said, this is a one-time thing. I have no intention of repeating this or bringing back something like this in the future. You know, I think, I think we're mostly through COVID at this point. But, but again, I wouldn't want to rip through the two point six million and not do something for the employees. And once you start, right, you say, okay, well, what's, you know, again, five hundred dollars, which is a quarter per hour, is a minimal number. When you multiply that times the number of employees we have, obviously, it grows to roughly a hundred thousand dollars.
And that was, that was discussed between the three full-timers, correct?
Correct. So that was, yeah, this is not, this was not, well, well, again, it was initially brought to us through the firefighters. When we talked about it, tried to come up with what we thought was fair, there was a feeling that if we're going to do it for the firefighters, it doesn't necessarily have to be the same amount, but we recognize that we wanted to try to treat everybody, try to, try to recognize that everybody, to one extent or another, assumed some additional responsibility that maybe they wouldn't have had had they not been a municipal employee or deemed an essential worker. Is anyone comfortable making a motion? Is there someone willing to give me an explanation of what they would be comfortable with? Because I didn't hear from anybody. I didn't anticipate, I, you know, I'm looking for feedback here or support.
I'll make a motion to release ARPA funds to the general employees and the fire department in the amounts stated.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Al Giatti. Is there support?
And can I preface that by saying, from a private standpoint in business, I know this is not a motion itself, but I understand having to keep employees and, and not necessarily rewarding employees, but giving them a reason that we want them to look at that particular time. It was a very, very, like I said before, it was a very, very difficult situation all the way around, and I'm okay with that recognition of those employees for that amount.
I understand.
It's very, you can look at it in a number of different ways, but I think that's being fair.
Is there support?
Did I hear the motion, you said the firefighters?
Well, the general employees and the fire department.
Yeah, in other words, I had a, I had a proposed motion, but in essence, you're making the motion as it was presented.
Exactly, yes.
My hesitation was, I'm reading this recommendation, it's quite a lengthy paragraph, and I was trying to, how am I going to compress this to make a motion?
Well, you don't have to compress it. You can just say exactly what's there. Because those things are important, you know, I mean, those are important because we're identifying that this is, I think it's a, it's a bump, it's not, there's other issues that we're running into, so.
Yep. So would it be fair, Mr. Al Giatti, to say that you're, you're making the recommended motion?
Yes.
Okay, all right, good.
Okay, then I'll support that.
Okay. All right. We had a fair amount of discussion. Is there further discussion, Board? Hearing none and seeing no public comment, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Board. Next on the agenda is item F two regarding movement of some funds. Board members, several years ago, when Turries made improvements to their manufacturing facility, the plan review required that a sidewalk be installed along the front of their property. In lieu of this, the township accepted five thousand, a five thousand dollar payment, which would be used to install a sidewalk if one were to be constructed along Production Drive in the future. These have, these funds have been kept in a trust account, I think this was a trust and agency?
Yes.
But recent changes to governmental accounting guidelines require us to move these funds. Our attorney has recommended that we take action at a board meeting to move these funds into the general account with the stipulation that if a sidewalk is constructed along Production Drive, the township will assume the cost for the sidewalk in front of four zero five eight five Production Drive. So typically, in our past, our practice would not be to put these into general fund. But accounting practices now tell us we can't leave them in the fund that it's in, and our auditors are asking us to make a correction. So the advice from Mr. Huth was to take this action.
So it doesn't really change any obligation that the township had, it was just, we had money set aside. You know, I'm going to clarify, it's not creating a new obligation for the township. We were already obligated to put a sidewalk in in the event that there's a sidewalk put in there.
Right.
We were given five grand at some point in time, and we tracked it one way, now we're going to move it, now it's going to be tracked through minutes essentially.
Right. And taking board action means that it's a, it's recorded permanently, so if sometime in the future someone says, hey, we do or we do not have to put in that sidewalk, the minutes would be searchable, and we'd see that this board, that any future board has that obligation. It doesn't change the obligation, it just kind of makes it official because it's going to happen through board action.
I'll make that motion to move five thousand dollars from the trust and agency account into the general fund and obligate Harrison Township to assume the cost of installing a sidewalk in front of four oh five eight five Production Drive in the event that sidewalk is constructed along. In front of four oh five eight five Production Drive in the event that sidewalk is constructed along Production Drive.
Okay, thank you. Is there support?
I'll support that.
All right. Got a motion by Mrs. Rose with support by Mr. Atkins. Any discussion of the motion?
How is this, is this impacting at all that any sidewalk ordinance if that sidewalk fails?
There, there isn't one there.
No, but we're going to install it?
Well, the, the idea was, there are no sidewalks on Production Drive. So our, our ordinance and the plan review at the time required that they install a, a, a sidewalk, and they said, it's really a sidewalk, I mean, it's, you know, whatever. Hundred-and-fifty feet of sidewalk that goes to nowhere, so they said, in lieu of us putting that in, we'll give you the amount of money you need. And if should, should other businesses ever construct one, you know, you've got our costs covered.
Okay.
So, but the reality is good or bad, it's probably not likely, I mean, it's an industrial park, there's not a lot of foot traffic through there. But at the time, that was what the, the board at that time or.
Well, it was planning, I mean, that's the Planning Commission's review standard, so why is it in a new building?
Correct.
Where is it?
Yeah, well, here's the money in lieu of the sidewalk, and we just won't put it in. And whether I agree with that decision or not, I'm, I'm, we're kind of encumbered by that prior decision.
And to your question, Mr. Atkins, if it gets put in, in twenty years and it falls apart in thirty years. Somebody in fifty years can figure out how the ordinance applies, because it'll probably have changed by then.
Plan and still be.
Yeah, well.
Yep. We'll be flying around in jet packs.
Fifty years, I'll be seventy-five years old.
Yeah.
Crazy.
Wow, weird.
That's the new path.
Yeah, yeah, good. All right, any other discussion regarding this motion? Hearing none and seeing no public comment, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, board. Last on our agenda, other than public comment, is this easement acquisition. So, first, to kinda give you a perspective, I, I have a diagram that I just sketched up, something basic. Uh, you might see, this is the area across the river from what used to be Markley Marine and now Lambret Marina. Uh, there's a pretty large house that was constructed along there over the last couple of years. Uh, and one of the major challenges for that property was how to get sanitary sewer service there. Uh, there's sanitary sewer service to the, to the west and to the east, but there was no sanitary service to this property. So we went through that process, folks got that done. They have a few final steps in order to have a permanent record. And, uh, proper easements recorded for this. They currently have a temporary certificate of occupancy. So on the diagram, in the upper left, the road that you see there is McComber. There's sanitary service to McComber, but that's as far as it travels on this. So the agreement was made with the property owners that were on McComber to have a six-inch sanitary main come across their property. And onto the lot that I kinda drew in there, that's sort of a odd-shaped, four-sided lot with trying, you know, comes to a point at the top. And that six-inch sanitary wa, is, is, uh, the reason that the folks agreed to this is because that extension of that six-inch sanitary main. Onto that property means that that large parcel that's, uh, uh, behind McComber Street there can be now built on. Because there's sanitary sewer service. So the folks that owned the three lots that I've kind of penciled in in that corner. All three lots are owned by the same individuals, they agreed to grant an easement to the folks who built the new house. And, um, so, work's done. They wanted to get occupancy, but they haven't yet finished all of the recording on these sanitary lines. At the same time, uh, we have learned that the right-of-way. That for South River Road that runs along the edge of the river, dates back to nineteen oh nine. Which coincides with a statewide act where basically roads were sort of, th- this concept of setting aside right-of-ways was created. That's when utilities were forming, roads, vehicles, so forth. So there was never a road there, uh, but the state gave this authority. So this easement was created along there. Unfortunately, there's not any solid record of where the easement is. And so by any record, it appears that the edge of our bike path, the, the, you know, basically, the road and the bike path are in the easement. But the bike path follows right along the edge of the easement. So there is no right-of-way on the other side, the far side of the easement. There were some fire hydrants that were located between the bike path and South River Road. Which is hazardous, as you might understand, because it's pretty close, there's not a lot of shoulder there, so you got a little bit of shoulder, you have some drainage. And these, these hydrants were, were in that area. Some were relocated when the bike path was constructed. And most recently, one was relocated because it had been hit by a vehicle. It's, it, it, we've discovered that those fire hydrants are not in the easement, meaning they were placed on the property of the folks who built that new home. In addition, I think there's our three fire hydrants, and there are two memorial benches that have been placed there. And again, I think they were placed in good faith, anticipating that there was an easement because it's the county's position that they have thirty-three feet from the center of the road. But there's no legal documentation to support that. The records that we can find suggest that those five things, the two benches and the three fire hydrants. Are on that property. So, find ourselves in a situation where we thought, well, here's a chance we might be able to accomplish two things. One is, we wanna make sure that the easement is properly recorded for the six-inch main, as well as the inch and a quarter main that travels from the home. To the township's easement, and, um, and we wanna acquire easements for, uh, the five things that are public. That are along the road right-of-way. So we, we've had multiple meetings with the property owner. And, uh, we've negotiated different things. I also worked with the county's department, County Department of Roads, they have a road right-of-way, uh, department. And they have kind of, for lack of a better word, sort of procedures, I guess, standard formulas, methods of calculating. Uh, and I could get into the weeds on the numbers, but the bottom line is, is based on the area that we're talking about. And, uh, the encumbrance, uh, we might be able to justify that the cost of those easements is probably about twenty-five-hundred dollars. If we were to calculate that. We worked with the homeowners, um, so if I go through the proposed agreement as it shows. Uh, they would be agreeing to grant us the easements for those five things. We're saying that, uh, we would agree, uh, to take care of the work in the field to identify where those easements are. So we, we literally need to identify the five easements that we want, and that would certainly be something that we have to cover the cost on. Uh, but since we'd have field personnel in the area that would be doing surveying work, uh, we did, I did get a proposal from Wade Trim. Uh, and they'd estimated that all of the work to prepare this would be a lump sum of thirty-eight-hundred. And by way of casual conversation, it's roughly half of that would be to record the sewer easement. And, and identify it, locate it. Half of that cost would really be to do the easements that we need. So, i- if you called it nineteen-hundred and nineteen-hundred, the nineteen-hundred to record the five easements is something we need. So I wouldn't ask them to pay to give us land, but obviously, they benefit from recording the nineteen, the nineteen-hundred dollars associated with recording. And identifying where their two sewer mains are, both their, their individual lead as well as the six-inch. Uh, Mr. Huth and I had said that, once these documents were done, the cost for his firm to file this or take it to the clerk's office. He said maybe an hour or two of, not significant.
Yeah, a couple hours time.
Couple hours of, of, of his available time. So hundreds of dollars, not, not, you know, not substantial. So, plus or minus, you could say, okay, so plus or minus two grand. We had killed two trees or damaged two trees when we installed one of the hydrants, they, the, the, the employees replaced the trees or replanted the trees. But they were arborvitae, it was sensitive time of the year, so two trees have died. So the, the agreement would include replacing those two small arborvitae, um, around the fire hydrant or near the fire hydrant. The residents wanted to have a certificate of occupancy to move into their home, they've obviously finished the home, everything was in place. But they, we can't issue a final certificate of occupancy until all of these, we wanna make sure, you know, you can move in temporarily and you give us, you, a bond, so on and so forth. But we wanna make sure that we've got everything recorded properly before we give them that final C of O. So, they agreed to apply for a temporary C of O with the understanding that there's really was no cost in this case for us to issue that temporary C of O. Recognizing that we're working toward a final C of O. So the agreement reflects that we would refund the, the three-hundred-and-fifty-dollar, uh, application fee. And it comes with a thousand-dollar bond that they would get back anyways. Their goal is they'd like to get the final C of O. Uh, and again, in their case, and I'm, I'm not sticking my nose in their business, but typically, if there's financing involved in the construction of a new home. And payments that have to go, so you've got a bank involved, you've got a contractor involved. Bottom line, the bank isn't happy and the contractor doesn't get finalized. Until they have a final C of O, and the longer you keep that going, there's presumably some costs that fall to the homeowner, which was the reason I agreed to bring this, uh, to the board. I really think items one through five are pretty clear. The, the, the really, the one that's difficult is item six, and that's a question of defining how much of a compensation to give. To, uh, the property owners for acquisition of these five easements. I'm comfortable in saying that I believe that five thousand dollars is probably more than, uh, if I were starting with a blank sheet of paper. More than I would bring to this board. The difference is, I'm not starting with a blank sheet of paper. I've got literally three hydrants and two benches. That were placed without permission of the homeowners. So, from a, I guess it's kinda putting the cart before the horse. It was done in good faith, the right thing to do is to leave these hydrants where they are, moving them back closer to the road not only comes at a cost to relocate three hydrants. But it comes at a risk to the drivers that traverse South River Road. Um, and it comes at a future problem of replacing those hydrants. If somebody hits it and it hits them, it's a hit-and-run, we don't have any insurance claim. We've gotta pay for replacing those hydrants ourselves. So, uh, we discussed, and I, uh, uh, you know, what, what should this number be? We've had numerous and lengthy discussions with the residents and, uh, made an effort to, to try to come up with. You know, I guess the lowest number, right, is to be responsible. And at this point, uh, despite numerous conversations and effort, five thousand dollars would be the lowest amount. That I was able to negotiate with, with the residents. So, it's more than I'm comfortable with, but I'm also comfortable that if I can't come to an agreement with a handshake with these people. The legal cost to try to resolve this is gonna be far in excess of this. And, and delays and bad will, and maybe we don't get to keep the hydrants in the safest location. If we find we're in a court of law, maybe a judge demands we move them, and, and if we were in a court of law, I'm sure our expenses in this case would exceed that. Mr. Huth, you mentioned that there's the potential, if we go through this process, that we could be faced with the legal fees of the other party?
Right, the only way to go through the process if there was adversarial, and we wanted to keep the fire hydrants there, would, would they call a condemnation or eminent domain? Where we say, by way of necessity, they have to be there, they can't be anywhere else. Uh, but during that process, when you determine compensation, uh, the opposing party's side is entitled to get their attorney fees paid for. If the compensation ends up different than what we've originally offered. So, I, you know, Ken and I talked about it, it's one of those where the number seems a little bit high, but as a steward of the taxpayer's money. Uh, you realize there's no way to do it, uh, priced better than this at the end of the day, so.
Yeah, but so if failure to come to an agreement is likely gonna cost us more in the end.
Right.
Um, and, a- and if we were to pursue condemnation, uh, it would be difficult. There's a, the, the process, as it was explained to be, through the folks at the county, uh, Department of Roads, right-of-way department, the fellow who's in charge of that. We could certainly argue that there is a public benefit to fire hydrants. I mean, there's a, you know, requirement, how many they should be, how far apart they should be. And clearly, putting them closer to the road comes at a risk, not only to the township, but to the folks who drive along South River Road. I don't believe we would have an argument to say that, that the public, that the benches have a, that same benefit. So now, you say, well, because we couldn't come to an agreement, we're gonna go to court, and we know, we're not even gonna ask, we're just gonna tear out these benches. And now we're dealing with folks who in good faith came to us, said we'd like to put a bench there, we said, yep, we'll accept your money. There's a certain emotional attachment that residents might have there, so, you know, that kinda puts things in jeopardy. So, I'm not saying that I think this is the all-around best thing, I guess it's the best of all the options we have. But I, I believe it's our best way to resolve, uh, a problem that was created, uh, you know, over a period of time. With the placement of those hydrants. So, I don't know, questions, discussion?
I just have, just a question, if they wouldn't, when they built the house, were they required to cook in the sanitary sewer system?
Yep.
Or provided off the septic field?
Yeah, so, so the initial effort they had was to pursue, and that's, and that's one of that, so this, the process is difficult. Because the township doesn't oversee septic systems, I should say, the county health department handles that. So we don't make the decision. You might have seen, uh, recently, there were a couple of homes constructed over by the Van Groot above drain. Where we have the large pump station over by Siesta, the pump station there, there were a couple of homes there. Someone said, wow, what is all this work going on? Those folks want to build those homes. The, I think it's a perk test, but basically a test of the soils to see, will the soil conditions accept a septic field? So this, the existing structure that was there had a septic field, but once you applied for a permit to build new, it was, it wasn't allowed. So this, this process initially started with the sanitary feed, uh, traveling to the east. And, you know, months or several different iterations, um, this seems to be the win-win. So, good news is, is folks were able to get sewer, it's a beautiful home, if you've ever been, I haven't seen it, I'd love to see the inside, I'm sure it's really nice. But, uh, you know, we wanna make sure that we resolve this recording, properly record all the sewer easements, get our easements in place. And, and by making this agreement, uh, if the board supports it, we execute the agreement, they can get their C of O. Because all the work falls on us, so we're not dependent on saying, well, their engineer's gonna do this, their engineer's gonna do that. Uh, there was some question initially as to whether or not we needed to have what's called as-built drawings for the sewer. But in lieu of that, the, uh, Water and Sewer Department, Building Department have said, if this is all recorded and there's notes identifying where these leads are. Uh, that'll satisfy their needs, so that should something come up in the future, you know. I don't think any of these are, again, kind of to the fifty-year argument on sidewalk, we're not, we're not gonna be talking about these sewer leads in our lifetime. But we wanna make sure they're recorded so that in the future, if somebody does decide to build something or change something, we've got a, a correct record. So I'm not sure if there's questions, issues, I just, I did prepare a, 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 a sample motion. Uh, to authorize the supervisor to execute the agreement with Blair and Katie Still, acquire five easements, have that seven easements recorded. At a total cost not to exceed ten thousand dollars. But obviously, the agreement spells out and the documentation from, um. From our engineering firm shows, we've got five thousand, we have a five-thousand-dollar cost, a thirty-eight-hundred-dollar cost. Uh, I don't think arborvitae's are a significant sum, and a couple hours for Mr. Huth's time.
It's all in probably a cost of ninety-five-hundred bucks.
I would say, yeah, I just proved not to exceed ten, because I don't know if there's something I encountered, you know, but, and again. You know, the alternative is, I don't know what the alternative is, it's certainly not, it's certainly not gonna be smooth or, um, or less money.
Are all these, uh, are all the easements between the house and McComber, is there any hydrants on the other side?
Yes.
I don't know what you mean.
On the cur, on the curve, there's east of the house, there's hydrants.
Yeah, I think there are east and west, there's one.
There's one, I think there's one to the west, one dead center, and one to the east.
Correct.
And then there's a bench.
Two benches.
Two benches to the west.
Yeah.
So just the hydrants and the benches, the, the forest main is not, it's not an issue where that's at?
It, yeah, it's, 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 it's physically in place and, and the agreement.
We, it's not our, it's not our main that we put in, so the easement or whatever, is that, that's our problem, I thought, I could see where you're going.
Right, so here's, so, so here's, and, and, and here's why some of this is kind of a, we wanna have a written agreement. Because it's gonna take time to do this work, should the board approve it, but the, the eas, there's, there's kind of really three things going on with the sewer. Uh, issue. One is the six-inch main. Uh, it, it, it's, it's understood when that main was installed that there's a why there, meaning that the folks who might build on the large lot. That's on the west edge of this can connect to that. As soon as more than one person connects to a sewer main, it has to be a public main. Meaning it has, we have to own it and maintain it. It can't be a private main with two leads. So, initially, the folks who live on McComber granted an easement to the folks who built the house. To allow them to build all of this on their property. But we have to have an easement saying that that six-inch is ours. But we have to have an easement saying that that six inch is ours, otherwise, nobody can connect, you can't connect to it, it's all private. So, we have a need to record that six inch main. Since we're in the field, we'll, we'll clarify where the location of the inch and a quarter main is across the neighboring property, and then just note where the rest of it is up to the house so that we have a permanent record so that should there be some future problem, like, every, every one of us who owns a home in Harrison Township, there's a, at, at a minimum, a handwritten note of what the inspector saw when that home was built, or when the sanitary sewer were installed to replace septic, and it might say, you know, that the lead comes out eight feet from the southwest corner of the home, and it runs at this angle out to the street, you know, ten feet from whatever, you know, that sort of thing, identified by manholes. We want to make sure we have that same record for this property. Um, and so, that's, that is a benefit to the homeowner, but obviously, recording the six inch main is a benefit to multiple property owners, and we want to make sure it's done properly so that in the future, someone wants to build on this home or on other lots, there's no dispute.
So, there was a couple residents on McComber that granted that easement?
It's actually, so it happens to be that you can kind of see, there's a lot that's right on the South River in McComber.
Yeah, I see that one.
Behind there, there's an alley.
Yes.
And then, then there's two lots that are kind of split by that six inch main. All three of those lots are owned by the same person who also owns the property behind there. So, you, you might look at this and see actually a total of four lots. One on South River, one to the north of the six inch main, one to the south of the six inch main, and one between McComber and the new house that was constructed. All four of those are owned by the same person. So, it makes sense for them to grant that easement because now they have sanitary sewer service to the large lot. So, they said, we'll grant the easement for free because you're going to build a free six inch sewer main, and they have to want it to, us to be granted to the township because now that means they can connect to it. If we don't own that six inch main, they can't connect to it.
And you said the word I was looking for, free.
Well, it was, right.
It was the McComber landowner said, to help this new homeowner out, go ahead and put it through my yard.
Right, but, but they also now gained sanitary sewer service to their new lot.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I get there was a benefit, but my, my whole thing is with the residents on McComber saying free, and we've got three hydrants that are now out, outside the easement, if you will, that the homeowner's saying, well, I got something for free, but you guys need to pay.
Well, yeah, but don't, keep in mind, they didn't get something for free. They spent substantially more than what we're talking about here.
But they didn't get, they didn't get charged by the residents of McComber to put that six inch main through.
No, but they paid to, they paid to construct a six inch main that they don't, that, that the other person benefits from. I mean, in other words, the cost to construct a sewer was, I think, forty-some thousand dollars.
But it could have been fifty-some thousand if that resident would have said, it's ten thousand dollars, go through my property.
Right, and here, and so what had happened was, when they were looking for solutions, this notion of bringing that six inch main from McComber in that way was something that, uh, our water and sewer director came up with to say, hey, let's go to that guy, look, you're going to get a free main. They said, okay, this is good for me because I would have had to pay upwards of ten, twelve thousand dollars to have a hundred and fifty feet of sanitary sewer main installed six inches.
No, I, I understand it is a beautiful house and, and the, the, the couple invested a lot of money, and that six inch main cost them a lot of money to get that inch and a quarter forest main over to their property. My only point is, they were granted something for free. And now, this township has to pay nine or ninety-five hundred bucks because we infringed on some of that space, and it's just, that's where my head goes, right?
Sure. I think the difference, though, is if they just went ahead and constructed a six inch main and this inch and a quarter main across their property without asking for permission, the people who own those four lots may have approached this from a different perspective because you just didn't, you basically trespassed on my land.
Right.
Installed a benefit, something for your own benefit without even asking, and now after the fact, you come to me. So, I, I guess I, I hear what you're saying about the free versus paying. The difference, though, is, and whether we like it or not, we're a municipality, I mean, we.
We're on their property. I get it, I understand, I understand.
You know, people tend to look at things a little bit different. It's one thing if you go to your neighbor that you're going to plan, you built a home and raise your family next to, and work out an agreement, and something completely different when you discover, hey, someone took my land without my permission.
But it's also, I mean, to, to stretch that argument a little bit, you know, it's also, if they thought it was their land and they went and put it in, and then found out that, oh, man, I went over.
Right.
That's the situation we're in. We're not in the, we came in the night and did it.
Well.
I mean, three of the things that are on their property, or four of the things that are on their property, were on their property when they bought the house.
Uh, it's understood.
You know what I mean, like, they, they weren't surprised by that. We didn't show up while they were constructing. There was one hydrant that moved that sort of brought the issue to light, I think.
Yeah, absolutely, right. This is, but, but this, this is likely the kind of problem that was going to come to the surface eventually. I mean, someone's going to say, hey, wait a minute, you know, where is, where, where does my property start and end?
Right.
Whether it was the prior owner, or the current owner, or a future owner. And, um, this, this solves the problem for eternity, you know? So, again, I'm not, I'm not saying that this is, uh, the, you know, the best agreement would be, you know, initially, we started the conversation saying, hey, we'll take care of the recording for this in exchange for those easements. And they said, well, we think there's a monetary value to those easements. As I mentioned, the county has a formula that would roughly work out to be about twenty-five hundred dollars. Um, so, you know, even the county would say, this is what we do. So, if we went through a condemnation process, that would be probably what that payment would be.
But also the twenty, I mean, just to be fair, the twenty-five hundred is the cash cost to it. The county still has cost to survey, to record.
Sure.
On top of.
On top of the twenty-five hundred.
Right, it's not, it was, it's not a.
It's not a total cost of twenty-five hundred.
Right, I think.
It's a compensation of twenty-five hundred.
Yes.
And I had, and I, and after learning that that was their number, I had gone back to the homeowner, saying, you know, I don't, I don't, uh, not only do I not deal with purchasing right of way on any regular basis, I have to come back to the board of trustees to be able to give them some perspective of how I might establish that number. And so, I felt, you know, the county's, uh, certainly a good municipal partner. Um, this, the individual that I worked with is currently working, uh, near us because he's got some easements that have to be acquired in order for, uh, some of the bridges that are being put in at the end of South River. So, he has current data in terms of how much per square foot, their standards relative to what percent is, is used when you, a hundred percent is to buy, you know, twenty-six to forty-nine percent is to, to, um, encumber through an easement and so forth, so. But at, at best, the number that I could come up with was twenty-five hundred, uh, plus costs associated with doing it, but the, but the request ultimately that I'm bringing you is five thousand. And it's more than I'd like, but I think it's cheaper than pursuing some other legal option at this point. And I think in the end, we end up with certainly some number of residents who are happy that their benches get to stay there, uh, future residents not hitting a hydrant. It, we, you know, eliminate future costs of having, uh, hydrants that were closer to the road that would get struck from time to time, and obviously, it's a much safer long-term solution. So, I don't know, if there's other discussion, questions, or, or a motion?
I mean, the way this is worded, number one, that there's going to be a six-foot by six-foot square centered on each of the hydrants? I know, I believe in the wintertime, don't the fire department go out and blow those all out? Isn't there a process to?
Water and sewer guys do.
I'm sorry, the water and sewer, not the fire department.
Yeah.
So, are we going to have issues with, you knocked our grass down outside the six-foot easement?
Right.
You know what I'm saying? It sounds like this has been being discussed for a while, and I would hate to say, okay, do this, and then all of a sudden, wintertime hits and we're, we're arguing over.
But that's, but that's, so, to, to your point, we have, I don't know, nineteen hundred, I forget how many, substantial number of hydrants. We do that all the time.
This was, this was the square footage that the water and sewer guys had, this is what we need, so they're, they're not foreign to this.
Yeah, this, this wasn't something I made up, this was Dave's request. So, he said three feet is good. We thought for the maintenance of the bench, one foot is, is sufficient.
I just, it, it seems that this has been being discussed for a while.
Correct.
And then, uh, I see a, a letter from Wade Trim that was drafted today. With some cost in it.
Right, and, and what it has, so what had happened was, we, we came to an agreement with the family late last week. We came to a tentative agreement with the, with the resident. When I reached out to have a cost for you for the right of way, or for the survey work from Mr. Newmer, uh, he had said that the fellow in his office that handles that was out, would be, would be back Monday. I said, well, Monday is good enough because I can't ask the board to make a decision prior to that. And I'd spoken with Mr. Booth about it, shared the agreement with him, you know, so forth.
So, would the motion need to be to?
The proposal.
Approve the township supervisor to?
Yep, authorize the supervisor to execute the agreement with Blair and Katie Still, acquire five easements and have seven easements recorded at a cost not to exceed ten thousand dollars.
And I would just like to make, I'll make that motion with the addition of no changes to this agreement.
Yeah.
And if anything gets changed, then it needs to come back in front of the board.
Yeah, and you can include that, I'm okay, but that's, I mean, you're approving this agreement, nothing else.
There you go.
Mr. Booth has seen it.
But we don't need to, I don't need to add that.
Correct, right, I'm, I'm not changing it.
Then I'll make that motion.
Okay, good, good. All right, motion by Mr. Badkins, is there support?
Support.
Okay, support by Mrs. Rose. We had a fair amount of discussion, but, uh, is there further discussion? Hearing none and seeing no public comment, we've got a motion by Mr. Badkins with support by Mrs. Rose. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, thank you, board. Uh, next on the agenda is public comments. Uh, we'll open the floor for public comments. The comments can be about any subject you like, and we ask that you try to limit them to five minutes at length.
Board members, residents, Steve William Barrell, uh, twenty-six year resident, clean-cut, do-gooder boy next door, clean up, fix up, people help people. Just, uh, want everyone to, uh, please, uh, if you haven't already, and if you do, keep on, uh, checking out Save Lake St. Clair on Facebook, and, uh, keep up to date on all the things that's happening. Hopefully, we got, uh, uh, the right people in place federally to, uh, take care of some of this mess. There's a lot of exciting things happening, so, uh, check that out on Facebook. And other than that, everyone have a wonderful, safe evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Hearing, seeing none, we'll close the floor for public comment. Is there any further board comment?
I have just, uh, one comment. Um, I met with Dave Newmer last week. Um, I've been getting a lot of phone calls, I don't know about the rest of the board, regarding the bike path project that's sort of moving forward. Um, so, he did bring me up to speed, and I'm sure Mr. Verkess and the others are probably up to speed, but I thought I would let the trustees know that, um, currently, it's, the bid's due on the fifteenth. Um, there's only two prime contractors bidding it, but there's a couple organizations, they call them plan room, where the company grabs the plans, and then if there's five hundred companies signed up for that plan. So, we know we're going to get, most likely going to get two numbers for sure, and it could be a lot more. Uh, but I've just been getting a lot of, when's it going to be done? Is it going to be done by the end of the year? And really, until the, the prices get evaluated on September fifteenth, um, you know, I, I'm guessing something will eventually end up in front of us, but I just wanted to bring you up to speed because I, I, I just wanted to talk to Dave Newmer about the whole bidding process, and he brought me up to speed, and I, I think that, uh, Wade Trim's doing a good job for this township at this point, so.
Yeah, I think so.
So, really, it's, it's springtime, probably.
I, I believe so, but what, what Dave said was, well, put it out and see, you know, I.
We won't stand in the contractor's way who says, I can get it done.
Sure. Or they might say, hey, we're going to do these sections now and some other sections later, it's, you know, this is, we're, we're, we'll find out, kind of thing. No matter when we do it, I mean, let me just say, when we, if you, you might remember when we did the work for the pump station in Beechwood, and that involved the removal of the bridge and the reconstruction in that area, I mean, the, the people, the passion that people have for the bike path is amazing. I mean, the, the, they just keep, you know, like, guys are working, they just go barreling through on their bikes or roller blades or whatever. I mean, it's, uh, it's a very popular, so no matter how you do it, it's just like construction right now. We all want the roads fixed, but certainly, you know, all of that construction leads to short-term, you know, disruption.
Didn't they generally stop working on the ashtrays?
It's, yeah.